Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the October 11th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on October 19th, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. Please note that the Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. So they're in the back of the room, in the bookcase, as are agendas for today's meeting. If you're the agent or the applicant on an item, it's not necessary to fill out a speaker request form, but if you're here and either in favor or opposed to an item, I would ask that you fill one out and turn it in, relate to Jerry over here, and she'll get it to me during the meeting. With that, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Roll call. Note that everyone is here. Travis is here from the board. Good to see you again, sir.
It's good to be here. Thank you.
First item on the agenda is approval of the September 27th, 2021 minutes. Are there any questions, changes, edits to the minutes? Hearing none, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Second item on the agenda is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of items three and four on the consent agenda, regular items five through 14, followed by the county board report and our normal items through the end of the agenda. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Anyone at all? Noting none, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. The consent agenda. The planning items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 0514 for Desiree Kursov to review a single-wide manufactured home as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. And staff is recommending to continue the review of conditional use permit CU 0514 to the December 13th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting with two conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 0937 for Kim Smith, I-90 Cold Storage, to review our 122-foot-tall wind generator in the heavy industrial district. And staff is recommending to end conditional use permit CU 0937.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the agenda?
No, not at this time.
Are there any items that the membership wishes to pull from the agenda? For those in the audience, items three and four are on the consent agenda. They'll be voted on at the same time. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on items three and four? Noting none, staff recommends approval of today's consent agenda. Items three and four, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items number three and number four.
I'll second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item five.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madison Ransum, Environmental Planner. Agenda item number five is conditional use permit CU 21-57 to allow two primitive seasonal cabins to be used as bunkhouses, no more than 180 days of the year. The applicant is Kevin and Deanne Killian. They are on Zoom for any questions. The location of the property is north of the intersection of South Rochford Road and Divide Road. The size of the property is 3.46 acres. It is currently zoned agriculture district, and there is no special flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of the conditional use permit application. I will read the findings. Number one, yes, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public considering the time limitations and the sporadic use of the applicant's request. Number two, yes, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effect on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area, considering the time limitations and sporadic use of the applicant's request. Number four, yes, access is off South Rochford Road. Number five, yes, two seasonal primitive cabins should have no impact on traffic congestion. Number six, yes, the property is zoned agriculture district. Seasonal cabins are allowed with a conditional use permit. And number seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is rural residential district. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The property has steering is two bunkhouses. Building permits are required as a condition of approval. There is a variance that was approved on October 5th of 2021 at the Board of Adjustment meeting, reducing the required setback from 25 feet to 10 feet for a single-family residence. The request was routed for an interdepartmental review. There were no objections or major concerns received. The applicants are in process of placing a single-family residence on the property. The bunkhouses will be used for family and friends, and the bunkhouses have no plumbing. Any water or wastewater will be used in the single-family residence. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2157 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item?
I just have, well, one, I guess. They're going to be building a single-family residence, but yet they will be using the single-family residence for water and waste? Is there already a residence there?
No, there's not currently a single-family residence there, but there is a onsite wastewater treatment system.
A what?
Onsite wastewater treatment system, a septic system.
Okay, but the bunkhouses have no plumbing, but people will be living there?
They won't be living there, and I can defer to the applicants to answer this question.
No, I don't need a long answer.
Okay. They will not, no, they do not live there.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
When you say that they're, I assume they're in the process, they already have a permit for the single-family dwelling, the way you refer to, or the way it's referred to by staff. Is it possible, from the picture that it's on the property next to it? Because it almost looks like that's a brand-new place they're building right there. And I see there's just one access. Maybe I'm, that's what I picked up, if you look at that picture. Right there up on the top-left corner of your picture, that looks like it's brand-new. In fact, it looks like it's half-roofed right there. The one here, I guess it looks like it's half-roofed too, but is that the place they're building?
No, that's a separate property.
It is. So they have one access off the road, but they split it, and you're comfortable with that, I assume, because we read something about it?
Yes.
But are they in the process now, already, if they've got a septic or some wastewater? Do they have their permit already?
To my understanding, they are waiting the days, the 30 days for, to apply for a building permit after the variance was approved.
Okay. All right. That I understand. Thank you.
Excuse me. Further questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? It's my understanding, we do have you on Zoom. Do you folks have anything to add to the, to the discussion before we vote?
No, we were just here in case there were questions for us.
Thank you. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 21-57 with seven conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chuti Masabun, Planning Department. Agenda item number six is conditional use permit request CU 2158 to allow an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, to be utilized on the subject property. The applicants and landowners are Virginia and Daniel Warren. The location is 13636 Twisted Oak Trail in Keystone. The size of the property is 4.83 acres. Even though the property has special flood hazard area, the single-family residence and the proposed ADU are located outside of this area. The zoning ordinance lists seven criterias that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. The criteria is, are listed on the screen. Staff will read the findings. Criteria one, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Criteria three, the requested use should not impede the normal or an orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in this district. Criteria four, the ADU utilities will be extended from the primary dwellings, from the primary dwelling. An address will be assigned for the proposed ADU and posted in accordance with the Pennington County Ordinance number 20. The ADU utilized the existing on-site wastewater treatment system and the same driveway approach as the primary dwelling. Criteria five, the existing approach will provide ingress and ingress as to minimize traffic congestion on Twisted Oak Trail. Criteria six, the current zoning district of the subject property is rural residential district. The requested use will conform to applicable regulations of the district if this conditional use permit is approved. Criteria seven, the future land use is identified as rural residential district, and ADU is consistent with this district with an approved conditional use permit. The property consists of a single-family residence, a detached, and a detached garage. It has an on-site wastewater treatment system with a current operating permit. The request was routed for an interdepartmental review. Emergency Services 911 commented about the location of the proposed ADU and its address posting on the property. Staff comments, the proposed ADU will be, will be in the rear yard of the property. It's on this red square on the screen right here. And on the top up here is the MOW system, which will accommodate for bedroom, single-family resident, I'm sorry, will accommodate for four-bedroom. There is no address posted at the end of the driveway intersect Twisted Oak Trail. The address will be assigned for the proposed ADU. Once the address is assigned, both addresses for the primary dwelling and the ADU must be posted on each structure and at the end of the driveway. This is included as a condition of approval. There is no other concern or comments received from the other department. Staff performed a site visit and verified that the proposed ADU complies with the requirements of Section 324 of Pennington County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2158 with 16 conditions.
Thank you. Questions on this one for staff?
Just one, Mr. Chair.
Let's go.
It used to be, so it may not be now, it used to be that on commercial septic systems and non-conventional, meaning based on some sort of per testing, non-conventional. I see this has a mound, but we're going ahead, it was set up, the mound system was originally set up for two, four bedrooms, and we're, we're only at two right now. Do we review those rather than send them to the state? In other words, do we approve them in-house now then?
The mound system is still have to, with us and then go to the state.
So any non-conventional still go to the state? So the mound system was approved for four bedrooms, but our environmental planner will review it to make sure the number of bedrooms. So if they're not increasing the capacity or the loading...
Right. I assume he was comfortable based on the numbers he was seeing from the original installation.
Yep, that is correct.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2158 with 16 conditions. Is there a motion?
I so move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Madison Ransum, Environmental Planner. Agenda item number seven is conditional use permit CU 21-59 to allow an accessory structure, a shed, prior to a primary structure on the subject property. The applicant is David Keywell and Christine Lepore. They are in the audience if you have any questions. The location is off Custer Gulch Road, northwest of the intersection of Highway 385 and Custer Gulch Road. The size of the property is 1.06 acres. The current zoning is suburban residential district. There is no special flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the Planning Commission may consider in their review of the conditional use permit applications. They are on the screen. I will read the findings. Number one, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, yes, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Number four, yes, no utilities are needed for a shed, access is off existing roads, and approach permit will be obtained from County Highway. Number five, yes, the requested use is an accessory use, and accessory structure does not increase traffic density in the area. Number six, yes, the current zoning is suburban residential district, and accessory structure as a primary use is allowed with a conditional use permit. Number seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is suburban residential district. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Property history, there is a violation on the property for a 20-by-12 shed without a building permit prior to a single-family residence. If this conditional use permit is approved, the applicants obtain, and the applicants obtain approved building permits, this violation will be corrected. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. There were no major concerns or objections. Staff performed a site visit and found an existing shed, a gazebo, and two RVs parked on the property. Staff spoke with applicant, verified that the RVs will be stored and not lived in. Staff has not received any complaints regarding this conditional use permit. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 21-59 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this one?
Just one. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
I'd like to talk to the applicant. I have a question for him.
Please go ahead and state your name when you get up there.
Christine Lepore.
How long have you had this property?
A little over a year.
Okay. Is there a well and a septic on the property?
No, sir.
No? Have you, have you had any parties or things like that in that shed? Or whatever you call it, I guess part of a...
It's a part of a grain bin, a party. We've had a gathering, I mean, no more than five or six people.
Okay. Because what I'm alluding to here, and I told the chairman I would let it know, over a year ago on Labor Day, I had a call on this property, and it had seven RVs on it at the time.
That was not our...
And there was a, there was a well and a septic on the property, or a holding tank of something.
Not, we have never had seven, there's never been more than those two RVs. It was not our property. A year, wait a minute, a year ago?
Labor Day?
No, that was, we did not have seven, there's never been more than those two RVs on that property. And we do not have septic or a holding tank of any kind.
Okay.
There's not one that's in the ground, not above ground, no.
Then this, this person, and they didn't give their name, in all fairness, story that you know, they just called me and they said that there was a party on that, and they described this exact setup around the Fourth of July and another one on Labor Day that went on until, until really long hours into the morning.
Must have been a different property.
It's, I'm sorry, but that person is mistaken. We don't, we are very considerate of our neighbors.
Okay.
When we are there, we do not carry on until late hours in the morning. That, I'm, that person must be mistaken speaking of another property. There are multiple properties on the street, and I have a feeling I know who they're speaking of that would have had seven, as many as seven, and that is not us.
Okay.
No, sir.
This, the location they gave me, Sandra, was this, and I hadn't gone there. I had spoken to the planning about it, and we hadn't gotten up to this here.
I have a feeling it's, it's down the street and around the corner from us, but we do not, we've never had more than those two RVs on our property.
Yeah. And then my last question is, from the picture that one RV sure looks lived in or used, it's skirted? It appears to have been used in the past?
It has been used, and it is not any longer.
Okay.
Once we got the violation, we were explained, everything was explained, and we do not, it is not used.
What did they use for a septic?
Would...
How did they dispose of the waste?
Everything was...
People that were using it?
Everything that was, it was contained in the camper, and there's a company that comes and pumps out.
Okay.
At least, when we did use it, it was probably twice. Nothing is, nothing is turned out on the ground at all.
And they, but then they didn't have any water either?
You, we would fill the tank in the camper when we were there, and that's no longer being done either.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So you, how long have you had this property? You said you...
A little over a year.
A little over a year. Was that gazebo there, or did you all put it in?
We put it in.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Seeing no further questions, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 21-59 with 10 conditions. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I guess I'd really like to confirm, rather than I had mentioned I might want to continue it, but I really would like to confirm the water in the septic, that that's the condition, that that does not exist. I don't know whether any other members would be, but there's something, if it's already been there and people are living there, that means we'd have to haul water in the back of a pickup truck. And this person was very specific about that structure being used as a partying area with fire in it. And, and I guess I just can't look away from that. I didn't get to it, I wasn't able to get with the staff with their time. It's not my responsibility or right to be tracing on people's property, and we just hadn't gotten to it.
Sure.
And I really believe that they were explaining this particular piece of property because of the structure and the fire.
Um, yeah, please come forth.
Mr. Chair.
The structure that you're referring to is a very large pavilion that is down the street, that is around the corner and down the street. And yes, they do have as many as seven, they have had that many on Fourth of July and on Labor Day.
Just down the street from here?
Yes, sir.
Can you help me out with the property?
Yes, sir.
So that I, because I may have misunderstood where she was explaining.
I believe that you did.
She said it wasn't, was like in line with the Idyll Weiss Mountain rental property.
That's on the opposite side of the, that's on the opposite side of the, the street from us.
And I looked at this picture, and that was about, in other words, it was aligned with that red. So you're saying it's down the street from here?
Yes, sir. I'll show you where it is. It's so, that's us. The property that he's speaking about is this one on the corner.
Right there.
Yes, sir. And there is a very, there is a pavilion that is there.
Where, that one?
That, that property. And Idyll Weiss is, Idyll Weiss is here.
It is down the road.
Rent, Idyll Weiss Rentals is in, is, I believe, in here, or here, I'm sorry.
Well, that same road does, that she explained, does go down to that. I see what you're saying.
Yes, sir. It goes all the way down and around the corner. I mean, it, if you, I wish I could point, but it actually comes all the way here and back. There are quite a few properties there, and that, that, whatever that person described was not us, and we have, we do not have a well, and we do not have septic there.
Okay.
There's only one person in that area that's across the street from us that actually has a well, and he does not have septic either.
Okay.
And he, well, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and the well isn't, the well is not in use at all by the person who has it across the street. But that, that was not us.
Okay. I withdraw my request based on what the...
I mean, you're welcome to go and look by all means, but we, that is not, eventually we will when we build a prop, when we build a house there.
No, I felt kind of bad that this, this was a relatively serious one, but I didn't have a chance to get out and check it myself.
Understood.
And I saw this come up, and I wanted to question you on it.
Understood.
Thank you. I withdraw my request, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? We have a motion for approval, motion and second for approval of CU 21-59 with 10 conditions. No further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item eight.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item eight is Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment 21-13 to request a zero-foot setback to all interior lot lines of the PUD. The applicant is Blue Wing Recreation Corporation. Their agent is Ron Roskinett. Location of the property is north of County Met Road, south of Sheridan Lake. Property size, cumulatively, the PUD is 67.12 acres, and there is special flood hazard area on the property. Board of Commissioners approved the extension of Planned Unit Development 98-22 on March 28th, 2000, with conditions. Staff did review those conditions as part of this amendment. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway did have a comment stating that even though this is in the Blue Wing Road District, the County Highway is not in favor of zero-foot setbacks. Staff's analysis of the request is that during the review of PUD 98-22, approved conditions number five and six have been removed, as they're either satisfied or addressed as other conditions of approval. In February of 1999, the Board of Commissioners approved relocation of section line 98-08. That's on the screen, or the exhibit is on the screen for your review. This is a section line, you can see it's been relocated to the exterior boundary of the PUD. With that, staff updated condition number eight to state that the setbacks for future recreation sites and structure shall be a minimum of 20 feet between units, 10 feet from access roads, 0 feet from interior lot lines, 20 feet, or 25 feet from exterior lot lines, and 58 feet from existing and relocated section lines. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval of uh, plan, Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment twenty-one dash thirteen with, with conditions.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Jason, question for you. So why are they wanting to remove the internal lot line setbacks rather than consolidating all the lots? Are all those lots owned by different individuals? I mean, what's the?
They're all owned by the same corporation.
So why not just consolidate? Well, I mean, what's the benefit of, wouldn't it be more beneficial to consolidate, so you didn't have to worry about any of that, versus trying to get this done the way it is? I mean, I, I, maybe I'm just not understanding.
So either option, either amending the PUD or consolidating all the lots into one property. Uh, both options were presented to Commissioner Roskinect, and he chose to do the, uh, minor amendment.
Is there a particular reason why, or just?
I think it's just quicker, uh, in his mind, it was just faster instead of plotting.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Jason, do we have any idea, uh, the road district then is run by the same? In other words, what effect it has on the road district? I guess, uh, with Highway Department at least commenting that, I'd like to know whether it's got some effect on the road district. It would on ours.
Right. I don't believe that they had any issues or concerns with that. Actually, the treasurer from the road district came and applied, or paid the fee for the application.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Just, uh, out of curiosity, Jason, then, if the owner of this decided to sell off all those lots, then if we reduce that setback, then if somebody came in and bought each one of those lots individually, then they could actually build right up to wherever they wanted, correctly?
I don't believe that would happen in this case. Uh, Blue Wing is kind of unique in the way that it's set up with this PUD. I don't think that it would allow for individual parcels to be sold off to individual owners.
I, I get that, that, you know, we, you know, right now we see that as the, the structure of the business model, but let's say something happens and it goes under, and then it had to be sold out. That's, I guess, what I'm looking at is long-term, if something happened, now you have all these lots that have no internal lot lines, you know, and as I can tell, along with the roads and stuff, how, how, how complicated would that make things in the future?
Uh, it may complicate things for the current occupants of those properties if they were sold individually and somebody wanted to develop that property. I believe that a rezone would be in their best interest, uh, remove themselves from the PUD, and at that point, the underlying zoning district would take effect, so the required setbacks would.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, very good questions. Mine, mine were very similar to that. Um, i- if it, if they were to be sold off, then the PUD would not carry forward on subdivided lots. The PUD covers the, the, the entire part of this as a whole, right? And those are the rules that govern it as a whole. If it gets, if it got sold off and subdivided, does the PUD go away, or how, how, does the PU, what, what continues or not continues with the PUD?
So if they were to sell one parcel of this land, and it was removed from the PUD, the PUD would have to have a major amendment because it changed, changes the external boundaries of the PUD.
Okay. All right. So I think I understand. And then, um-
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify on that right now? But if the whole area was sold, individual lots, and they didn't ask to have the PUD removed, if individuals bought that, then they did, they would have to be removed from the PUD, because if they bought them, they would still fall underneath the PUD.
Correct. If they chose to stay in the PUD, they could just buy that parcel of land and use it under the current conditions of approval.
Gotcha.
But they're also buying an additional set of rules that they gotta live by.
True.
In order to, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, I redlined on this thing, what I consider to be all the interior lot lines compared to the exterior lot lines. Um, I was trying to understand if I, if I was clear on the request. Um, could you use your mouse and identify the lot lines that, that are indeed interior?
Um, everything that is contained within this external boundary here.
But only the interiors, right? So the external boundary of that, so the line that you're on right now? That would not.
That would have a twenty-five foot setback.
That would have a twenty-five foot setback. So everything on the outside that creates, if it was one parcel, everything on the outside would be twenty, remains twenty-five. And we're only talking about the interior lines.
Correct. And this section line that goes through the property, uh, has been relocated to this property line, so there would be a fifty-eight foot setback along this property line.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? Noting none. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, actually, I just had a quick question.
Go ahead.
Jason, when did that, um, section line right away get moved?
In nineteen ninety-nine.
Oh, in nineteen ninety-nine, okay.
Right.
That's it. Thanks.
Staff recommends approval of, um, Minor Planned Unit Development Amendment PU twenty-one dash thirteen with.
I'm, I'm move for approval.
Nine conditions, I believe.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Run item nine.
Agenda item nine is Conditional Use Permit twenty-one dash fifty-six to allow the rental of thirty-six UTVs and six slingshots, including a wash area, parking area, and thirty-six to boarding employees on the subject property. This was previously heard at the September twenty-seventh Planning Commission meeting, has been continued to this date. Staff did reach out to the applicant, uh, last week and spoke to, uh, Alex Nieman about, uh, some of the concerns that were brought up at the last Planning Commission meeting. I did include those in the staff report. And the applicant did provide new site plans, uh, which were a little more detailed, uh, in what he was proposing. I do have those on the screen for your review. He is planning to gravel this parking lot to allow, uh, I believe it's up to a hundred and sixty-five parking spots, which will accommodate the eighty-eight total required to include the UTVs. Uh, he also plans to add a gravel path in front of the rental structure to allow additional parking for UTVs. I believe that was another one of the concerns the commissioners have brought up. Uh, oil changes will happen in the structure here. Uh, long-term maintenance, the applicant is proposing to enlarge a garage door on this facility that will allow all maintenance to be done within that facility. Uh, there is additional parking down here. This is crushed asphalt. There is no need to improve that, uh, in any way. It does allow for additional parking, which would include the hundred and sixty-five spots, or up to a hundred and sixty-five spots. Um, applicant also is proposing to put in two sand traps on both sides of the wash area. They do have a temporary, uh, pump system set up. It's in the ground. It collects all the, uh, the water that washes off of the side of this apron, and it's kind of funneled down this way via the gravel into that pump system, which is run through a hose out to the other side of the, uh, the parking pad. So as you can see from the pictures, uh, the water runoff has been eliminated, and they did do the repairs to the ruts at the end of the driveway, or at the end of Robbinshurst Road. The applicant is in the audience. If you have any more questions for him. That, uh, staff has updated the conditions of approval based on the input I got from the applicant, based on the commissioner's concerns from the last meeting. And with that, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, Jason, let's see if I can flip to the right page here. I think I got my pen on. One of the pictures that shows that lot, that's, uh, the Millings Milk Chips. And, and I don't have any problem using for parking, but I have to say, even driving by this morning, it is presently full and has a pile of gravel, I assume they're using to, to do these other areas that have been softer, or, or in-
I would assume so too, but I would ask the applicant to speak on that.
But I'm just saying it's not clear now. It does show it in the picture to be clear, but it's not clear enough. And then the other thing I had for you i- is on page seven of eight, and it's item six. And it has providing Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources approval of existing onsite wastewater treatment systems for the current, says that South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources has previously stated that their office has limited authority over an existing OSWTS unless the system is documented to be allowing wastewater surface underground or enter waters of state. They further stated they do not have authority to require modifications to an onsite wastewater unless the system is failing. And I wrote there, you gotta be kidding me. If somebody decided on a property, uh, to switch the business and put a six-story apartment building or motel on the thing, you can't tell me the state of South Dakota would come in there and tell me, even though it was rated for a smaller system, that they're gonna do something about it. So somebody's kidding somebody. This was set up for a motel with so many rooms, of which I have no idea, and they did it because it was a commercial one. And now we're saying we're gonna look the other way on a commercial one? I don't believe that. So I don't blame the, the applicant, who let the state of South Dakota would tell you this.
That's what we gotten from an email.
I know.
That was their response, uh-
Somebody's gotta be kidding. I never heard that before in my life.
Our environmental planner did look at this request as well, and based on, based on the use of a motel previously, based on-
The number of rooms they originally designed it for.
And then just the use of patrons coming in to rent vehicles, he didn't feel that there was any increase in the utilization of the septic.
Okay.
So that coupled with the state's response, I believe, addresses the onsite wastewater treatment system issues.
I have confidence in our, our environmental planner, but I'm saying based on this statement, I'm, I'm losing some confidence. We have a rather distinctive and very, uh, scheduled, structured, uh, septic ordinance in this county. And for them to say this, and turn that back into our laps and expect me as a planner to believe in them? That's a real problem for me. Thank you, Jason.
And the applicants did have their septic's pumped last week, and they, they will be getting their operating permits, uh, this week.
But I'm saying as a planner, I'm totally in the dark. I have no idea what that was originally designed for, or whether that really meets the, the amount of handling of people here, uh, guests, employees. We have a lot of employees involved in this operation at times. And so, and look at our vacation home rentals, and how much the state wants to get involved in that, and we're only talking, uh, what, less than ten bedrooms? So, I mean, I just don't believe this. It, that's a absolutely phenomenal statement to be made from that department, to me as a planner.
I think it might have something to do with-
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Previous owner, El, Eldon. He's pretty tied into the state. I wouldn't, I wouldn't use these two septic systems for a hotel, ever.
Yeah.
I just had, I just had him look through and stuff, and it wouldn't handle it, so. We don't use a lot of restroom stuff there. Basically, one person that lives on site, and for the most part, our customers leave the site, maybe you know, a few, few restroom breaks just because they're traveling, but if anything, not being a bar restaurant anymore, it's substantially decreased in use.
Okay. Before we, uh, go to the applicant, though, are there any further questions for staff?
I don't have any. Thank you.
My question is, is, so have, uh, we got an email here from Ron, um, and he had some proposed items in here. Um, did those items get added as recommendations from staff, or are they addressed in current recommendations from staff?
I believe the majority of those are covered under the conditions of approval.
Okay.
I think there was one on there that I would leave to you, uh, whether you wanted to add that or not.
Um, well, there's an enclosed designated equipment wash area, be designated utilized to ensure no runoff is allowed to exit the property or enter any waters of the state. That's addressed?
So he wanted an enclosed structure. Uh, the applicant, I don't believe, plans to put an enclosed structure in.
I think the plan for the enclosed structure was by early next year or something. Is that right? Or you were gonna do it in a garage?
It's, you cannot wash these machines in an enclosed structure. It destroys that enclosed structure. Um, the pump system for, he's mostly concerned about his, his, uh, was a constituent that is our neighbor with the noise complaints. Um, we are, well, we were gonna go, um, until this year, everything's been gas-powered because it was inexpensive, but with the inflation of fuel and stuff, we just had our, uh, engineers go over a, a pump modification. We're gonna go electric and enclosed, uh, within that, uh, garage structure. So all, all of the noise should be in-house or severely muted, and then I've been talking with Jason and, uh, the landowner, uh, about like maybe a six-foot privacy fence to just, uh, ease up his view of having to go home to his property as far as, I mean, people are gonna wreck my machines every day. It happens. So there's always, but I, I can see as a property owner not wanting to drive through like a salvage yard, so we'll try to block that off. Bring that stuff in for maintenance into the, uh, underground structure, which is, we, we call it the old Ferniston Building, but that, uh, further, or that, the bu, the building right in front of the wash. Um, it's, it's got a fairly large under, uh, area that's got like twenty-foot ceilings and stuff, so we're gonna try to modify that. We just need to get a way to get equipment in and out. Right now, it's got just like a golf cart door on the backside there.
Sure.
And, and we still wanna keep the ambiance of when people are driving past on the highway of that little cottage effect, you know, it makes the hills look nice. We're trying to keep that with marketing the buildings. We don't really wanna change the property that much, but we can be neighborly as far as what he would request.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
So that I can get in my head which building you're talking about for which. Uh, let me, the one building, uh, closer to the highway has an underground, uh, overhead door, and that, uh, the reason I wanna put some tanks in there or something like that, now you're, you're gonna have to remove those, it would do whatever you have to do.
That stuff's been removed. I gave that back to Eldon. I didn't have any need for big wooden casks, cause he was kind of in a predicament to sell, and then-
And then the other building is all above ground, isn't it?
Yes, um, so-
Like had, used to have apartment or something that looked like above it. Okay, now help me out. Which one are you gonna put your maintenance into?
In the underground where the tanks were, uh, cause again, there's twenty-foot ceilings, so we can put like a lift. All major maintenance is done, uh, in Custer, at, uh-
The approach comes out of the chip lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. That's where we plan on moving, uh, major maintenance rebuilds in that area.
I assume you're gonna move the stuff out of the chip lot, cause it's part of your parking program now?
That stuff actually belongs to the general manager. He's, uh, he's a farm kid. He's the engineer. He's the one creating all this stuff to make it better, but he collects stuff that he thinks he can rebuild. He's been told to remove that.
Thank you.
Further questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Uh, in case I've missed it, they, they water traps that you're going to use when you wash the machines off.
Car, car wash grade sand and oil traps. Uh, essentially, we are gonna put a car wash in to mitigate like any, like, uh, potential for runoff, like, we are already trapping, use all of our chemicals that we would, and we don't wash with chemicals. Uh, it's just straight water. Um, but it was brought to our attention that we do oil changes, and they do get gassed up, and that stuff can lie within the machines and the skid plates. Right now, most of it's, uh, well, we can tell it's trapped on our property, but we're gonna put in the sand and oil traps that your traditional car wash would have in it.
But it's pumpable?
Yes, sir. Yes, so it will trap all, all, you know, somebody has a leaky radiator comeback or something, I mean, anything that could happen, motor blows, and that's why we're gonna try to keep our oil changes and our maintenance on fluids above those sand traps, instead of putting them down in the hundred-year floodplain of that basement, so that if there was a drainage situation, it would be gathered with in the sand traps and the car wash base. We just can't put a structure over it. It, it would be, the, the whole property would have to be changed in order to house a big enough in, enclosed car wash.
Further questions?
Do you have one other one? The picture, the chemical container?
Mm-hmm.
Off to the right are some old skid plates. Off to the right are some old skid plates, bunch of junk. When you have a disabled UTV?
Yes.
Where you gonna put them? And you're gonna have some or some get crashed or whatever?
Yes, sir.
Where, where do you store these things?
They come up to an impound lot in Custer where we have a actual old auto body shop with an impound lot.
So they're removed from the property?
Yeah, those were probably done that day.
Yeah, well, I'm not throwing bricks at you.
Yeah, no.
I was just curious in the future how you were.
That all the garbage, you know, anything, what problem with that guy is he sees nothing as garbage. He will rebuild anything. But I see that as garbage. That all gets gathered up basically weekly, hauled up to our impound or recycled through steel, aluminum, plastic, that kinda stuff.
But when the new people, the new owners come in, are they gonna have access to, over your place to take things over there? Or what would they do with it?
What do you mean the new owners?
The, the, the way that you've got it set up now, everything is gonna stay the same? As far as you're, you'll be hooked up with Custer the same as you are now?
Oh, yeah. Custer was our original location and that, and I own both facilities. So.
It's still there.
Yeah. If, if, if one sells, they'll both sell to the same person.
Gotcha. Okay.
Further questions? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 2156 with 24 conditions as their motion. Omo.
Second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries on item 10.
Good morning again, commissioners. Item number 10 is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment PU 1603. To request changes to specific conditions of approval of the original planned unit development. The conditions that were requested for change were number four, number seven, number 11, number 12, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 22, 24, 26, 27, 28, 30, and 44. The applicant is Dan Evangelisto. The location is southeast of the intersection of Highway 385 and Taylor Ranch Road. The property consists of approximately 12.91 acres. There is no special flood hazard area on this property. This was up for review, the minor plan unit development. And in working with the applicant, they had requested to change some of the conditions of approval. Staff didn't find any concerns with a majority of the conditions that they requested changes to, with the exception of number 28, which was the temporary membrane roof that shall be permitted to remain until September 2021 and shall be replaced with a stick-built roof that so that no temporary membrane is in use in the event of the structure. That was a specific condition that was a motion by the Board of Commissioners, so staff did not feel that it was appropriate for staff to make that recommendation for that change because it was a specific motion by the Board of Commissioners. However, all other conditions of approval have been met. I can go through all of those specific requested changes or you can just, the applicant is in the audience if you have questions for him. But staff didn't find any other concerns with any of the other requested changes with the exception of that one. So they are recommending approval of that major plan unit development amendment.
Questions for staff?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So how long has this roof been a membrane roof?
Since it was originally constructed.
Yeah, but have there been complaints regarding the roof? I mean, why, why, well, I don't know if it's all of a sudden, but, but why would we request that it be replaced with what, singles or?
Yeah, there was quite a bit of discussion during the Board of Commissioners meeting originally. And that's what the board came back with as their motion at that time.
Okay, is the owner here?
He is.
Yeah, perhaps he could lend some, some insight to it.
Sure, there was a lengthy discussion on, you know, fire protection, snow loads, things like that. So. And he can probably speak to that more.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Question? Further questions for staff?
How long ago was that?
The original one was back in 2016. I believe that motion was in 2018, in September of 2018.
So the roof has been there since 2016?
It was, it's been there for quite some time because originally it was just the regular tent. They did build the hard sides. They did add a kitchen and bathrooms to that structure. It's just the membrane roof is the only part that is not stick-built currently.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
And if I can, you know, to the best of my memory, Rich, you and I are the only two that were still on here that were when all this originally went on. So there's a lot of history to it. There was a lot of complaints from the community at that time.
Travis, there was three of us. I was here when this whole thing started.
Oh, were you here?
And I was sitting in the audience.
Oh, okay.
When you guys reviewed it and I was sitting in the audience when the commissioners reviewed this.
Well, thanks for refreshing my memory on that one.
I, but I agree with where you're headed. Go ahead.
Gotcha. And so there was a lot of discussion on it. And, you know, this is just kinda give some background history and Brittany, you can tell me if I'm wrong in any of my recollection here. Obviously, the, the facility was, is used primarily as an event center. If you haven't been out to it, I'd encourage you to at least go look at it because it is a very well-maintained facility. And best I can see, the times that I've been out there, I've been out there a couple of times. I was out there just last night, actually, with my family. We went out there just to kinda look at it once again before it, you know, came up today. And from the time that I was there before to the time that it is now, it looks, you know, significantly. You can tell he's put a lot of work into it and a lot of pride into what he's doing there. And I, and I understand the concept of wanting to make it feel like you're outside with that inside security. But that roof looks still in good shape and you can correct me if I'm wrong because I know you have to go up there and look at, maintain it and stuff of that nature. But I remember his main concern back whenever this all started was we don't have an ordinance for tents. And the, you know, he would have to take it, put it up, tear it down, put it up, tear it down. That puts a lot of wear and tear on those materials. And so, you know, we've kinda gone through this process and I think it looks really good and I think it's viable. But I don't wanna influence everyone's decision on that. If you haven't looked at it, I'd encourage you to look at it. But if you have questions, please ask those questions and, and we can move forward from here.
That's what I remember as well is that, that there was, it had something to do with it being a tent and, and the regulations associated with that. This is already in my mind in, inside of a PUD. If he got, if he has problems with the walls or the roof, he's gonna have to fix them. But I, I don't have any concerns with it being there. And if, and if the staff hasn't had any complaints in the past few years, then I see no issue with it moving forward. But that's only my opinion. Further questions?
I'm gonna weigh in here too, just a little bit, because I was here when they first started. We actually started out with either a bed and breakfast or a vacation home rental was where originally started and it developed into, because there was more than 10 rooms that went on being that. Before this was put together, it took two, two and a half years to put these together? Yeah, two, two and a half years. So it should've been done right. And I was also here when the commission at that time actually asked the question, is this gonna be the end of this? Is this gonna be straightened out and is this done? And I kinda chuckled at that time because I don't see any business that everything's done. Changes happen. COVID happens, things happen. And I'm still at that. But I do see some of the requests and here we are down the road again at the end coming in. And I hate to pick on the candidate, but they've always been a little slow to respond. They wait till the end and then we, we go through this process and here we are down at the very end of these things, stretching it out. I don't see that as a good way to approach this. But I do see some things that, that you wanna approve and if you feel comfortable with. Some of them's just conditional use wording that we've used in PUDs, which this county has used for years because it's not automatically included in a PUD. Just because you have a PUD doesn't mean that that wording is in there. And I think we have to be specific to honor the people that put this thing together originally. But then some are also just wording changes, especially the developer approves. That makes me scratch my head. Sit, I have to sit and think. Now wait, when the developers, the applicant, and they're part of the conditions, so they've gotta prove it so that you can approve it. And that waffles me a little bit. Can you explain that one? There's like three or four of those.
Right. And I think that the reason is because most of those lots are owned by the developer at this time. I do believe there's an HOA in place, there's, and there's a road district in place. So there's some things that are in place that I think this stays consistent with so they don't get, you know, if the developer approves it.
I guess that was my thought too, and that's why I then would right away switch back and say, I understand that the developer in this case is, is a slightly different entity than the, the resident.
Correct. And, and under PUDs, when you have multiple lots like this, under a majority ownership, I think that comes into play, especially when an HOA is involved.
Well, but I meant saying as a planning commissioner that votes for these things, I don't know whether he controls just 51% or he controls 75 and we'll get to that. But I'm saying that's where questions come into my mind. As a developer, yes, they are also the developer. But how strong a position are they in versus when they start saying that this is what the wording's gonna be? For a thing to be fair to everyone, we're supposed to be fair to all property owners. And that's the way I look at my job. So it, even if there's one out of 100 that has a serious problem, it's something that, that you've got to sit back and consider and listen to. But then there are some, the number 28 you're referring to, my only hang up on that just from being a builder and history with some of that is that it's a fire type of thing. You have toxic fumes from fire and it depends on how comfortable everybody is about fire-wise on, on a roof like that system. The same thing can happen in, in a particular type of uses of wood in buildings, let alone the roof. But I'm just saying that top, I'm sure if it went up in flames, it'd go fast and there'd be some toxic fumes from it and you'd be wanting to get out of there in a hurry. So that was, that was all I had, other than your wording. If you're comfortable removing some of these, the way they're requesting. I didn't notice that you did all of them.
We didn't remove. The only condition we removed was the first one because it was a statement of understanding and the applicant did do that. We amended some of the wording to be more consistent with.
Yeah, saw the wording ones.
That it was appropriate. The only other one was the hours of operation, the quiet hours. We just added non-residential lots because, you know, the residential lots fall under other requirements.
Yeah, I didn't, I tried to flip back and forth and some of them just seemed to be the same. So thank you. You assured me that that's what we were doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions for staff?
I haven't. I still am haunted a little bit by the discussion of the roof and so forth of this structure. What was the issue initially? Why, why were they concerned about that and they wanted it removed and changed?
There was a couple of issues. I remember the discussion because I wasn't the actual planner that worked on the original, but it was the snow loads, the fire, and then noise.
During the wintertime?
And then noise was the three that I remember that was the, the concern.
So it's not used in the wintertime generally and so there, there wouldn't be people in there under those circumstances?
I believe, you know, that would be a.
I mean, we're gonna have a snowstorm this week supposedly. I mean, we could've had the Atlas storm. That's a possibility, yeah. And those things do occur. So that would be my concern. I mean, I have a friend who has a horse barn that has one of these great big, you know, plastic structures. But if something were to ever happen, it would be he and his horses that suffer. But we do have an obligation to make certain that this does not imperil people who might be there for a winter or late fall or even early fall wedding or something. That's my only concern is, is a safety one. And I, I see nothing other than the, you know, personal opinions of people who are probably not expert on this issue regarding the safety. I mean, I haven't heard from an engineer or, I've heard from an engineer, but an engineer that specifically deals with these kinda things. I don't know if it's necessary to make that kind of a stick, but that would be my only concern about this is that we, we seem to be speculating and maybe we're making, you know, a mountain out of a molehill here. So. But I, I am in a loss for guidance, I think. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Seeing none. Sir, do you wanna speak on the item? Please come forth. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Point Commissioners, I'm Dan Evangelisto. Answer your question real quick. That top does not burn. When we initially made our application for this, I submitted more engineering and paperwork from the manufacturer. And I gave it all to the fire marshal. It, it doesn't burn, period. I mean, a stick-framed building's gonna burn 100 times faster than this thing. It does not put off toxic fumes. It's one of the highest-rated tent tops in the, in the nation. In regards to engineering, I submitted engineering packets from the manufacturer. I submitted more engineering for this event center tent than I did for the 11,000 square foot structure. That's the, the bed and breakfast. And, and I'm not dragging my feet. Initially, when this was, the, the main two things that, that we have concerns with were item 13 and you see a 27 or 20 at the stick-built roof. When we filed an appeal after the 2018 review that that was, became a condition. So it was in appeals for quite some time and then COVID hit and things got delayed and delayed. And in that interim time, we got two new county commissioners. And I had both of them come out and look at the facility and they saw absolutely nothing wrong with it. So I talked to my attorney, he talked to the county's attorney and asked us if we would bring this back before the commission to review it again. And they thought that we could resolve this issue of the stick-built thing and leave it as a, a permanent membrane roof. And so that's why I'm here now. This primarily was, item 13 was the quiet hours.
Right.
And I think we addressed that by saying non-residential, cleared that one up. And the other one is the stick-built issue. Initially, when we made application for this, one of the conditions allowable use was a permanent tent. Some concerns were from the commissioners whether or not it would handle winds and snow loads. And we've gone through five, four or five winters already and we've had some major winds and some major snow loads. In regards to your concern, we do not do winter events.
Okay, how did it come through the Atlas storm?
I don't think it was there during the Atlas storm.
Really?
But we don't, it gets winterized this month and it, it'll stay empty. And if we're having an event and we have a major snowstorm like that, nobody's gonna stay through a major snowstorm and, and party. They're gonna go home. So, or we would ask them to leave. So I mean, there really isn't any risk to the public or who's ever using the facility. So, and there was just those two items that were under appeal. And so we were told we had to do a major amendment, so we did. And in really looking at this thing, we thought it was a good time to clear up all these other items that were, when PJ, the former planning director, formed this PUD and the conditions, he just transferred the conditions off a conditional use permit that was specific for five lots for primarily the bed and breakfast that we were owner, the next owner would own. And so it really wasn't worded correctly for all these other lots. And so that's why we thought this would be a good time to go in and just tweak some of the verbiage to make it so it makes sense in 20 years when somebody else or multiple people own all these other lots. That's why we just tweaked some of the verbiage on all these other ones. So.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
So then you're com, have you seen the conditions that Brittany is suggesting?
Comfortable with all of them. The only one that we would ask is item number three. And I think it regards, it just says that daily and the event operations of the specialty resort be conducted by the owner, onsite manager, and staff as necessary. I don't even know why that's even in there. I don't know why the county is telling us who or how to run our business. I don't know that they do that to any other business in the county. It's not a major deal, but I just don't understand why they even have that condition in there. I could see it on conditional use permit when we had the bed and breakfast, but I don't know. Like I said, it's not that big a deal. I just, I didn't know why they were.
I'm going to try to reply on it. I think there is a comment in in the the rigs that does indicate what what a PUD you're dealing, that still you're dealing with only one entity as the owner. And and I think that's what it related, I thought it did. I went back and looked, and that's what I thought it related to, the way our uh sub rigs were written, but because I didn't understand that either. I I didn't understand why you, that would bother you, and I didn't understand why we were so specific, so I went to look at that. And that's what I found was that there's a relation, there is a something in the ordinance that says about dealing with one owner, and I thought about that versus all your other LLCs.
Right.
And that you got to pin it down to one to represent you.
Okay.
And am I correct, Brittany? Okay.
All right, I've never had it explained to me that way.
And then, but you are comfortable with the new hours that she came up with?
Yes.
And then, but you you wouldn't be comfortable with twenty-eight because she's leaving it the same, or?
Correct, correct.
So that's why you're here today?
Correct, that's the bulk.
We've got to decide, so we're we're down to that one? Is it, and I'm not trying to pin you down, I know this has gone on for a long time for you as well as these commissions and commissioners.
And the majority of the homeowners who moved in after we started all this, who were the complainers, the the majority of them, that's moved.
Yeah, I assume the audience much emptier than it used to be, so.
Right, and just for clarification, under the new um recommended conditions of approval, it's number twenty-seven now is the the one that deals with the tent, because the the um statement of understanding was removed because they had met that condition.
Thank you for correcting me. So we're talking about twenty-eight, and we can go to town. If, and you you indicated that your original supplier, I assume you grandfathered, they put out all sorts of new uh things on tents after the the huge tent failure down at uh the auctions in Arizona. That year, they came out, it took a long time for Congress to do it, but it they came out, and I assume yours is probably grandfathered beyond all that. But you feel comfortable as far as uh fire risk is what you're saying?
Fire?
Fire.
There, it does not burn, period. We even did demonstration originally when this all started.
Okay.
Yeah, it's it's rated.
That was my biggest concern, I didn't even think about snow loads because I knew you didn't operate it from what I knew and didn't plan to operate it in the winter. Okay, thank you.
Brittany, item twenty-seven still indicates that a temporary membrane roof shall be permitted to remain until September twenty twenty-one and shall be replaced with a stick built roof.
Correct, that was still staff's recommendation because it was a motion by the Board of Commissioners, and in speaking with the State's Attorney's Office, I'm not sure that staff has the authority to to make change that recommendation since it was a motion. Um it would be up to this planning commission to make that recommendation of the board and then ultimately make that decision.
Okay.
That was the reason that it remained the same.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
It sounds to me like this needs to be decided by the Board of Commissioners.
In in major, right, in major amendments, do you go to the Board of Commissioners?
I would recommend we approve these changes that Mr. Evangelisto wishes and and let them decide this issue, because even though the membership is much different, at the time, there was obviously concern, and and that concern may still be there, or it may be gone, as it has. It's not, doesn't appear to be here with us, so. I'm in favor of doing something that I affect. I don't mean to suggest that we abrogate our responsibilities, but I do think it's a realistic recognition that this is an issue that will have to be decided ultimately by them, and but I'm comfortable with it.
So number twenty-seven then needs to be rewritten um for us to move this forward to leave the tent. That's how I read this right now. You guys agree with that?
So what are we doing with the issue with the membrane roof?
Item twenty-seven currently reads that the event structure referred to in condition number twenty-five shall be for the existing forty by one hundred event area that is currently covered by a forty by one hundred temporary membrane tent and used to uh and used as open space um and covers the existing kitchen and bathroom. The event structure shall be made of six inch thick insulated stick built sides which tie into the existing stick built kitchen and bathroom and structure. A temporary membrane roof shall be permitted to remain until September twenty twenty-one and shall be replaced with a stick built roof so that no membrane, no temporary membrane is in use for the event structure.
So I would recommend it should be condition twenty-six. Um shall be, and then if you wanted to remove the requirement to change the stick built um roof, um then a temporary membrane roof shall be permitted to remain, period, and then strike the remainder.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Brittany, if it's, if we allow it to be permanent, would would wording it, a membrane roof shall be permitted rather than a temporary membrane roof?
Sure, you could remove the strike temporary, uh membrane roof shall be permitted to remain, period. And then condition number twenty-six.
Why would it be twenty-six?
Because if you look at the original, because it says the special tours are also being and event structure is referred to in number twenty-six.
Oh, you're saying condition number twenty-six?
Yep, for the event structure referred to in condition twenty-six.
Okay, before it was twenty-six.
Right.
Now it's twenty-seven.
Oh, I got you. Right, so it's twenty-six, so it should be.
No, it used to be twenty-eight.
Right, so the event structure referred to in condition twenty-six shall be for the existing forty by hundred. And then just put a temporary membrane roof shall be permitted to remain, period, and then strike until September, and then strike temporary.
What if we just remove the last sentence out of number twenty-seven?
Correct.
You could do that too.
That's pretty simple, we're just, if we decide to off it, I'm just saying it looks to me like it solves the problem. Because we're taking the September twenty twenty-one out of it, period. And we've already stated that it is currently covered by a forty by one hundred temporary uses open space and covering kitchen.
So you would remove the temporary membrane tent, so you'd strike temporary because it would not be temporary?
Temporary membrane tent, yeah, I'm going, starting at A. Uh temporary membrane roof shall be permitted to remain until September twenty twenty-one and shall be replaced, et cetera, et cetera, and remove all that sentence.
I'm going to reread twenty-seven.
Yeah.
As I, as I understand.
I think there's a lot of movement in that.
That the event structure referred to in condition number?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, shall be for the existing forty by one hundred event area that is currently covered by the forty by one hundred. I'm going to strike out temporary mem- membrane tent and used as an open space and, excuse me, used as open space and covers the existing kitchen and bathroom. The event structure shall be made of six inch thick insulated stick built sides which tie into the existing stick built kitchen and bathroom and structure, so has this, but it looks to me like the sides are still fabric.
Nope, that's that's a old picture.
They're they're solid.
All right. And then A, membrane roof shall be permitted to remain, period. The rest of it is stricken. Correct?
Oh, all right, you're just removing the words temporary then, from what I see.
Temporary and the last sentence.
You do better job, that's why you're the chair?
I try. Further discussion? Are there any of the, are there, I I really want to make sure that this is the way we want this when we send this on. Have you read the rest of these, sir, and you're good with them? All right. So then number set twenty-seven would incorporate the the changes discussed. Further discussion?
Can we have that reread?
Here we go. That the event structure referred to in condition number twenty-six, so twenty-five is stricken, shall be for the existing forty by one hundred event area that is currently covered by the forty by one hundred, strike the word temporary, membrane tent and used as open space and covers the existing kitchen and bathroom. The event structure shall be made of six inch thick insulated stick built sides which tie into the existing stick built kitchen and bathroom structure. A membrane roof shall be permitted to remain, period. So I'm, strike out temporary and strike out uh the words until September twenty twenty-one and shall be replaced with a stick built roof so that no temporary membrane is in use for the event structure.
Okay.
Further changes, questions? Noting none. Staff recommend uh recommendation is for approval of the major planned unit development amendment PU sixteen dash zero three with forty-five conditions, noting the changes in condition twenty-seven. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion?
Just one item. If our fire marshal has any problems with this, I I would advise that our planning department make sure he attend the meeting, or whoever is in charge of these sort of structures. If it's not a fire question, if it's some other question, snow load. Have them there at the commis, so the commissioners have them to question. That's all, that that would be my only suggestion. We're going on that this old item was submitted with all that information, and certainly those folks would have it to review now, and if they question it, they should be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, we're on item eleven.
Item eleven is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash one eight for Pennington County to add section three twenty-nine pre-screening, pre-screening procedure for marijuana licenses to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh the reason for this amendment is to establish initial screening requirements for the marijuana business applications, and staff is recommending approval of this request, OA twenty-one dash eighteen.
My question for you is, does staff return anything on an application within three business days?
We will have to with this item because of the short timeline that is the requirement of the state. Um this is a way for us to go through the applications, there's very basic criteria, so either they meet it or they don't. So it'll be a pretty basic checklist, um just so they can get the process moving in order to apply for their conditional use permits.
Okay, so you're good with three business days?
Yes.
All right. Stay with me here, we move forward several years and the rules change, and we have thirty of these things. Still good with the three business days?
Uh we may have to see what the state comes back with. Right now, there's a one-time requirement there, and if we open up other application, I know, Megan, if we open up or the state opens up another application period, we may have to reconsider this, but at this time, this is something to get in place so they.
And and maybe the rules would change later on such that that um, you know, we would come back and and amend this ordinance as well, um so we we can tackle those things at a later date if if need be. I'm just trying to see into the future here, maybe.
And Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So that ninety day requirement that they put in place has caused significant issues for a lot of local government. I have brought that up with the Department of Health attorney. And to my understanding thus far, they have done nothing with those concerns. Um there's multiple issues with that regulation that they put in place. A, it steps on local government's ability to zone um and kind of puts us on a timeline that it, they don't have a lot of statutory authority for. Um and then B, the way that it's worded in the regulations, essentially, they're only looking at these very first applications, they're not looking at new applications down the road. So unfortunately, the way that we had to word um really all of our ordinances, including this one, is with that in mind that they have not fixed that issue, because they basically have it right now um ninety days from when you first pass your ordinances setting the 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 number of facilities that you're going to allow, and then that's the cutoff. So the way the language is worded doesn't make it so that way there is a timeline cutoff for any new facilities after that ninety days. It's an issue that I've brought up with the Department of Health, and they have not fixed.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Megan, we talked a little bit about this, the change from that thirty days to the ten days, and I would say, yeah, I as thinking about it more, and I've thought about it a little bit more since that uh the Board of Commissioners meeting, it's almost like we're treating this particular piece of the ordinance different than everybody else. We're given some special consideration, so, and and no one has even gotten back to you on that aspect of it?
No, and you know, when I brought it up to, it's Justin Williams is the Department of Health attorney, he he indicated to me that he saw that as an issue and that he was going to bring it up to their group, and I have not seen any changes.
So after these initial ones go through, let's just say they don't do anything, and we have to go through these initial ones like this, do you foresee that um statutory authority will be able to kick it back to thirty days the way we should be able to make it mirror within our ordinance like we're supposed to? Is it really just primarily for these first applications? Is that really what it's?
I would hope that it gets fixed, um but my guess is that it's probably not going to get fixed until they have, you know, those initial application phase go by, and then say local government decides that they want to add additional uh licenses or a license becomes available, then the department is going to realize, oh, that problem is still there and we never fixed it, and then they're going to have to fix it. Um because they are, in our opinion, Tracy and INJ, they are the ones that really do the lottery, and that's the way that the statutory framework is set up. They are going to have to have a cutoff deadline, and I actually even proposed um language to fix the issue with that regulation to make it so that way would work. Um and I haven't seen anything, any movement to try to fix that. Um and so unfortunately, they've, the state has really put local government, all local government in a bind by the way that they've worded um that particular regulation, and it's something that was kind of thrown in at the last minute, and there are a lot of local government attorneys that are like, what are we supposed to do with this ninety days? And they they literally threw it in at the last moment, and then they added it um right before they did the legislative approval of the regulations, and now the department's kind of saying, well, it's already approved, what do we do now? There wasn't a lot of, I don't, and I don't know, but I don't think that there was a lot of thought process about that ninety day. And then the Department of Health attorney had pointed to their requirement under the statutory obligations that they have to return applications in ninety days, and I pointed out, well, actually, your language doesn't do what your authority is. It does the opposite, it puts a timeframe and a time limit on local government to get their zoning done, and then you guys have the nine, you know, the ninety days by statute that you have to render a decision, but what your regulation does is not actually what the statute gives you the authority to do.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
While we have Lee Glenn, our uh director here, I brought up about this issue about the drop dead dates that are in this thing. And what I'm asking here, with both of you here, do you feel there's latitude such that we can add wording so that you can set something to the side with cause that would perhaps affect some of those drop dead dates? And in this case, the three days, I I concur with with Rich. In other words, can the county do that even though the states prescribe these dates? In other words, county's got to live with them, but they got to come up with some way to set something to the side with cause if something came up in the process. That's all I'm saying.
There are other, um, in the other ones that we have done, I did put for cause, um it can be set aside, and we can add that language. For some reason, we didn't add the language at the end, and it it could just say planning department shall provide in writing acceptance or denial of potential applicants, pre-screening application at the close of business hours within three business days of receiving the application. And then, what's the language that we used for? I can look up them. We've used similar language basically for good cause, um it can be delayed.
I'm assuming if anybody takes exception to it, they're going to shotgun the whole thing and sue us all anyway, but at least we've done our due diligence to give them idea that sometimes those things happen. It isn't staffing, it isn't people setting and and letting something turn into a mushroom on their their desk. There's with cause which creates a a new level uh of work requirement.
Yeah, and I think what I had done in one of the other timeframes that we did, it was actually for good cause, basically at the applicant's request. Um so if they have changes in their application or such and such, um if it's due to the applicant, not so much due to the county, because unfortunately, we're just going to have to try to push these through. It's, when these first come through, it's going to be just the planning department having to work on those. I mean, that's just the way it is because of the timeframes. But if the applicant is asking for a change or submitting additional information, then I think that that's a little different.
Is is writing acceptance or denial of the pre- Is writing acceptance or denial of the pre-screening application within three business days, is an email is considered in writing? Or does this have to be on a piece of paper and mailed?
No. So in writing, at least for legal terms, can include, you know, electronic writings.
Okay, which I assume that's your intention.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Megan, now this all comes to mind here as I'm hearing what you're saying, and so they don't, the Department of Health doesn't have the statute of authority to push some of this stuff on the counties, but we're making exceptions to meet their timeline. What is the fallout, or what happens if we say, that's not your statutory authority, we're going to do what we have to by state law, and then force their hand to go back and readdress that, rather than capitulating to what they've stepped out of their lane to do, and we're jumping through hoops to meet what they've done? What would that do as far as, I mean, you know, taking a stand as Pennington County, say, no, that's not your authority, we should be standing against that authority, and this is what we're going to follow, and then y'all need to figure where you're at, because you don't have the authority to do that?
And that's definitely something that Jay and Tracy and I discussed, because we're kind of all of the same opinion that we don't necessarily believe under the statutes as they are now, that the Department of Health has the authority to basically tell the local government what to do as far as planning and zoning, because the authority that is given to the Department of Health is you have all, you know, X, Y, Z things that you can do, and the authority that's given to local government is zoning, basically. But it doesn't say anywhere that the Department of Health gets to tell the local government how quick they have to do it. So it's certainly something that we considered, well, what if we just do nothing? Do what we're going to do, and then basically later on, when the county gets sued, say, well, this is actually the state's fault, not our fault. You're suing the wrong person, because that's really what it would come down to, right? So this was kind of a, we tried to find a happy medium to try to avoid a lawsuit down the road by trying to put in place timeframes that could potentially meet the deadline that the state has put in place. It's definitely an issue, and there really is no great answer. I wish I could give you kind of the big answer to fix it, but this was kind of the, I guess, compromise that we came to of, well, let's try to meet the deadlines, but even if we can't, we can still point and say, well, it's actually the state's fault that they made these deadlines to begin with.
Mr. Chair, I would think, I kind of agree with what you're saying. I believe we've done due diligence, and our people have done a fantastic job putting this on the table, but I believe there's people sitting there hoping that somebody like Pennington County is the one that screws it up and doesn't get it all done and meet the deadlines on time, because then we have this person to point the finger at, person or entity. So I believe we just go with what we've got here, and we modify it when they get it straightened out. That would be, I think we're just asking to be really singled out that we were the ones that slowed down the voter preference for this going into place. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Noting none, is there any recommended changes? We talked about adding a for cause statement with regards to the county response time. Is there a thought process on that?
Language that I would consider adding would just basically, under that subsection county response time, at the very end, you could put, this timeframe may be delayed at applicant request or for good cause.
I'm good with that. Is everyone else agreeable to add that? Not getting any no's, not getting any yeses.
Yes.
Good. Thank you. No further changes? With that, staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty-one eighteen with the change to subsection C. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item twelve.
Item twelve is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash nineteen for Pennington County to amend section five-eleven A dash one fees to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The reason for this update was to update the calculated amounts for commercial building permits to a tiered system. So essentially, for building permits right now, we just do it on a flat one percent of the construction cost. When we looked at other entities in cities and counties, they actually do a tiered cost because once, you know, things get over millions and millions of dollars, those permit fees get exorbitant. So there has been some requests to our office about, or some concerns with that. So I did notice that there is an extra zero here that needs to go. I noticed that, too. But I would entertain any questions or comments.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I remember on that Independence Hall thing out by Repsol Gardens, that's now a candy store, I remember their building permit costs were just astronomical, and they were in kind of a sore spot over, but they didn't have much they could do about it. And at the time, we actually considered a change, and I think this is probably long past overdue, so it seems reasonable.
Okay. Noting the change on the ten million and up number, right?
Yes.
A zero would come out of that. Is there further questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say thanks to Brittany, because I actually, I think I approached you with this first, and so, and discussing, because we're going to, we're going to be having some pretty big projects in the county, and this is going to be utilized here probably in the very near future, so I think it was good to do. The bad thing is, we didn't have anything really to pull from local, so she had to do a lot of work to get us a pretty good comprehensive way to figure this out, this tiered system. So appreciate it, Brittany.
Further questions? Noting none. Although, staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty-one dash nineteen, noting the change in the ten million dollar row. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash twenty for Pennington County to amend section two-sixteen, planning unit development district, to amend and supersede the existing section two-sixteen of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The reason for this update is to update this section to reflect changes in the view to twenty forty comprehensive plan. When the view to twenty forty comprehensive plan was enacted, it basically eliminated the zoning district planned unit development, and in that language, in the comprehensive plan, it also stated that there would be the ability to have planning unit development overlays. So this ordinance does reflect the overlay requirement, the changes for the amendments, the minor and major amendment requirements have not changed. There's some formatting changes, but the requirements essentially have not changed. The biggest change comes in with these overlay districts. These would be utilized in places where you would have multiple conditional use permits. The overlay district would be more appropriate. It also differentiates, it basically says that the overlay districts, the conditional uses have to meet the underlying zoning districts, because I know that there were some concerns moving forward with those actual PUD zonings, that they were becoming spot zoning, because when people couldn't get rezones, they would just go to a PUD. Well, in this instance, with the overlay district, you still have to meet the underlying zoning district requirement, so it still has to be consistent with those. So that is in there, and one other big change is that recreational resorts and specialty resorts will actually have to be PUD overlays instead of conditional uses, because those will be more appropriate under the PUD requirement, and those underlying zoning districts will still have to be meant. So those are some of the biggest changes with these, so I'd entertain any questions or concerns.
Any questions? Proposed language changes? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment twenty-one dash twenty. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item fourteen.
Item fourteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash twenty for Pennington County to add new ordinance number seven-thirty-five, Pennington County Building Code and Construction Ordinance, to provide basic building code requirements for construction alteration, movement, enlargement, replacement, repair equipment, use and occupancy, location, maintenance, removal, demolition of every building, structure, or any appurtenances connected to or attached to such buildings or in Pennington County. In addition, contractor licensing would be required. The Pennington County Board of Commissioners did approve a building inspector position. That physician was hired back in March, so this building code ordinance has been in the works. This is pretty basic as far as what the building code requirements are. It's just basically a initial siting, and then an as-built, and then contractor licensing. The biggest problem that we have in the county that we're, well, there's a couple, is the initial siting setbacks. Those are big requirements. This ordinance would allow the building inspector to require a survey if there's some concern with the setbacks. The other concern is that buildings aren't getting built in accordance with their building permits, meaning they may have a building permit for a garage, and then equalization goes out a couple of years later, and it's a single-family residence. So the problem with that is that they have been assessed on taxes as a garage for several years and not a single-family residence. One other issue with that is the number of bedrooms, septic is sized on number of bedrooms, finished space, so this should eliminate some of those concerns. We're not getting into any kind of electrical or plumbing, we're still going to leave that to the state. We will verify with the state that those permits are being pulled as part of the certificate of compliance at the end. And then the other, there are some exemptions. So accessory structures under four hundred square feet will not be as part of the inspection, and then accessory structures exceeding four hundred feet on property zoned agriculture and taxed agriculture, those would be exempted also. So single-family residences on ag property would still be part of this, but not accessory structures. The other thing is, is under the contractor's licensing, if they are in good standing and they're licensed with the city of Rapid City, they would not have to go through the county. We do, are able to see the city's contractors with our software that we have with our track it system, so we would be able to see if they are in good standing with the city, so if they are in good standing, they wouldn't have to be licensed with the county also. So those are some of the hot points, I guess, so if there's...
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So one thing jumped out at me, so I hope I understood it correctly, but on page three of eleven E, it says, building permits required. No building or structure shall be constructed, erected, enlarged, altered, repaired, removed, improved, or converted unless building permit has been obtained in accordance to ordinance. Does repaired mean, like, if I have a damaged roof because a tree hit it, do I have to go get a building permit to do repair work on that?
So which one are you under? Three, under E?
Page three of eleven E, and it's that first building permit required. I mean, if I have, which I have, like, ten packets of shingles, because we have trees around our home, if a tree falls, hits my home, do I have to have a building permit to go out there and repair that? I just want to understand the length and the depth of what this is going to require of individual homeowners.
Can I add to your question, too, so that we don't, what about dollar limits there, or if there's any dollar limits on those sort of things?
Oh, okay.
Other than that, I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying.
Right. So under five-oh-six, we don't require building permits for shingles. Now, if you have to replace trusses or sheeting, then the building permit would be required. So it depends on the extent of it, but siding, shingles, windows, anything that doesn't change the footprint of the structure does not require a building permit.
Sofits and all that.
Fire damage? Fire, fire damage?
Now, if it has to be reconstructed, like in a fire damage, now if it's just basic, no. But if it has to be completely reconstructed, we've had ones that basically have more than fifty percent of it has had to be reconstructed.
A limit or a dollar, that's where I was coming from, some sort of limit.
Is there something in here that it kind of explains that? Because I could see where this could be very, you might get a lot of, if some people read this, I know people don't read the ordinances a lot, because that's how we find all of the structures that we find that don't have building permits. What I'm getting at is, to understand this, unless you want to have people come in here all the time, if they decide that they're going to read it, you know, is there a way that we explain that a little bit better so that it's understood, that it's really if you're adjusting the footprint? So home repair work, if I pull the siding off of my house, and I have to replace a couple of two-by-fours, and then put siding back, you know, because I have damaged siding or something, that wouldn't fall underneath this needing a building permit?
So I'm going to pull, sorry, I'm going to pull up section five-oh-six. I can tell you right now, our practice in our office is not to do that.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But you see where I'm going, where it could be taken one way or the other. I mean, our intention today can be that that's not the case, but in ten years, the next Planning and Zoning Commission or Board of Commissioners may see it differently, and I'm just trying to make sure that the intent is carried out appropriately.
I'm going to pull up the language in five-oh-six, just so we're... So under five-oh-six, it says, a building permit is required prior to erecting, construction, enlarging, moving, or demolishing any building or structure. To enlarge means to increase square feet, number of bedrooms, or building structure footprint.
Is the word repair that's defined?
No. So, let's see.
That's probably my biggest hangup with that particular one.
So do you want it just, the language to be consistent with what's in five-oh-six?
I think, for me, it would have to be consistent with five-oh-six, that that's what we're utilizing as our reference.
What if you put the word structural in front of the word repaired?
What's considered structure?
Structurally repaired.
Because if I pulled my siding off, and I'm just using this as an example, I know this because this is my home, that's getting repaired.
Siding doesn't hold up the home.
Siding has to come off.
Yep.
And I've got wood rot around a window frame on my exterior wall.
Okay.
That we have to replace several of the two-by-fours that are there to include the window structure, and then replace the siding back. So you could technically say that is the structure repair, and that's what I'm kind of getting at. There's, it would be a very minor repair, because it's not going to adjust the footprint or anything of that nature, but it is a structure repair, because it's replacing two-by-fours that have been rotted due to a fractured window that allowed water to leak in, and then wood rot the two-by-fours. See where I'm getting? It's only because I've had this just now happening, and I'm kind of like, well, wait a minute, how does this impact that, based on the wording?
Well, and there's other contractors doing structural repair, because they run into mold and things like that that are going on right now, too, that they do not consider structural. They either encapsulate it or take it out.
Yep. Like, when we, we had a roof repaired several years ago on our garage, and when they pulled it up, they had to remove the plywood, and then they had to replace, they didn't replace the entire truss, but they repaired it, and then relayed the board down, and then put the tiles, shingles back on. So that's kind of where I want to make sure that we're not getting, you know, ourselves are causing extra...
Put a percentage of the structure not to exceed ten percent structural, or twenty or whatever, you could do that. There's some of that, some people do it by dollar amounts, but that's ever-changing dollar amounts, heavens, they're twice what they were two years ago.
So the two words that are concerned are the altered and repaired. Those are the two?
I would think so.
Okay.
Because they're not defined, and, you know, you could take it to one extreme or another, so, somebody could, I mean...
So what you're suggesting, Charlie, is maybe saying, like, adding a sentence that say, alter or repair of the structure exceeding fifty percent of the value, or something like that would require...
Cannot exceed...
Or cannot exceed...
Some, and relate it back to a value, twenty percent. Or of the job, for instance, if the, if it's re-roofing, and you run into a trust, and the re-roofing job's going to be three or four thousand dollars, and that's not out of the question now in a small place, it couldn't have reached, twenty percent is six hundred dollars, okay, that gives them something to replace and do... That gives them some to replace and do some plywood, do some different things that, that would, could involve structural.
Yeah, fifty percent is a good number because that goes with our floodplain ordinance too, fifty percent. I mean, that's kind of a standard.
Yeah, then you're not replacing the whole thing, I agree.
So however we can work it, yeah.
Go ahead.
You, and say, for example, you get in like you, what you're talking about and all of a sudden you realize, my gosh, we've got all this stuff going on. They'd have to get the permit in the middle of the process, project?
Actually, if it exceeded fifty percent, what she's saying, a lot of contractors would step back and say, I want this re-reviewed for structural, I don't want to be responsible for your roof beyond this. I would have to replace enough of it that it should be looked at engineering-wise, a trust, please, this sort of thing. They'd probably step away from it.
Well, hopefully they would, but.
Yeah, you don't know. If you're doing it yourself, you may not.
That's true.
But a lot of contractors would immediately become concerned that they're getting in an area that is specified in engineering and they don't want to do with it.
What, what does five oh six currently say now?
Five oh six is up right now. It says a building print is required prior to erecting, constructing, enlarging, moving, or demolishing any building or structure. To enlarge means to increase square feet, number of bedrooms, or building structure footprint.
So.
The altered and repaired is the only two words that are different in this ordinance versus this one.
Okay. So why wouldn't we just make it that? Or do we want to tackle the altered or repaired? I like.
Has this worked?
This is what we've been doing. The only, the only one that has the fifty percent altered or repaired, it kicks into the floodplain ordinance and FEMA regulations and that's different. So under that, they would have to, but.
It seems to me that we, we don't have, there's really good ideas coming from the board, so I think this is good. But I'm wary of just saying, yeah, we should go with that for today type of a thing. We have something that's been working for years and years. And you guys are comfortable with that, I think until we had a really defined, maybe vetted out percent.
I have an idea for some wording. You could add something to the state that repairs of the nature to allow the project to have a finished product are allowed or something like that. Repairs are allowed that, that gives you a finished product on your roof or your siding or whatever by the contractor without going to a building permit.
Megan Krueger with the state's attorney. My only concern with that language would be, okay, so we do that and then every single person is going to say, well, these are just repairs. I mean.
It's true too.
Yeah.
They could go the opposite way.
But we have a licensed contractor that we could ask. We don't now.
I'm kind of in agreements with Rich. I think we've already got wording that has worked in five oh six. And I would be, I would be comfortable with that wording rather than retooling it without sitting down and thinking specifically how rewording it would impact.
So you would strike altered and repaired from?
Chair. Does that give staff enough guidance?
There was only, there was another word demolished.
To enforce the.
Yeah, there was a word demolish in there.
I heard.
Why don't we just use the old language and just completely replace that section?
That's what I'm thinking.
Just copy and paste?
Yeah, just use the old language and just use that instead of that entire section.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Did you have some?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, I just had on the very first page, when we talk standards, do we need any reference to, to like the three-mile limit where we have joint authority? Do, does there need to be any reference to that?
There isn't any joint authority when it comes to building codes. The only authority the city has is for plating.
Okay, the only, all right, then what I was getting at was they have a different set of standards than we do, certainly.
For plating and subdivision. I would suggest too, that if you're going to change that in E, that under A applicability, that the language is still the same. So then you get rid of the maintenance removal, demolition, all of that in that same language. So that language under applicability is the same.
A and, A and E?
Yes.
Okay. I noted on the front page that, on the staff report, that it's ordinance amendment twenty-one dash twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Instead of twenty-one twenty. I think you read it in as twenty-one twenty.
Yeah, it's twenty-one twenty-one.
My last question was, how much are the building inspection fees for the city of Rapid City?
It's a percentage of the cost. They calculate it based on a percentage.
And in this instance, it'll just, you'll do it in an initial inspection and a final inspection? So really it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Extra. That was just something we kind of threw out there. Because we already charge a, a building permit fee. So these would be on top of the already building permit fee we charge.
Okay.
City uses the review fee, they don't call it a building permit fee, but they have one too.
Well, they have inspection fees.
Yeah, and inspection fees too.
Inspection fees. But these are in addition to our already, because we already charged like point zero four percent of the construction cost already for the building permit. So they'd be paying that fee on, in addition to this one.
I see that we already have a hundred and thirty-two single-family home permits year-to-date. Is one person going to be able to cover all of these billing permits?
That's what we have right now.
I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at, and so they, they do two inspections, right? We already have a hundred and thirty-two and that's just single-family homes. That doesn't include any of the commercial items. I, I'm skeptical that one's going to be enough, but I will play that out.
Mr. Chair, I still have two small questions. One on site plan, site plan and plans. I think, I guess I would add something. We still have a, a matchbook or back-of-napkin philosophy in this county by a lot of people that build things. And I think you're going to have to be a little more specific on your site plans and whatnot, that they're to scale, that they're submitted a certain size, not a, a picture put on a, on a copier and reduced eighty percent. You have no idea what you're looking at from, from a viewpoint of proper review. So, and, and that was only a suggestion. I would add something that states what you want to see as, truly want to see as plans. And especially something that's workable for you with the appropriate, anybody can buy an architectural or a, a scale. I mean, they can go in and they can afford it down at Office Depot, so if they want to do it themselves, they still can. So, and I know that's important in this county. Then the only other one I had was on your insurance. It would be wise, I think, that you put something about the yearly renewal of that certificate of insurance that you want to be notified from the insurer automatically or if it's dropped.
What was that one on page seven?
Uh, yeah, seven, I think it's five. Because that's very important in, and the, the contractors are used to it and so are their insurers. But if we require it, then they'll do it.
Charlie, question, are they only insured every year or do they have a timeframe? In other words, is it appropriate to say every year they have to recertify, but if they have a three-year?
No, it's on the certificate of insurance that will be based upon their renewal. An insurer, if they signed up today under our system and their insurance was due in December, they, the only one that would be issued wouldn't be, it would just show that they currently have it and it'd be good till December. And if we have it as a requirement, then that insurance company will send you a new copy when he pays us.
Right. What, what I'm getting at is, are they only for one year at a time or can they be bought for three years?
Job-specific, they can be job-specific if they want to. But I wouldn't think a contractor with a license would want to make a job-specific, unless he was out of state or something.
Um, most of the ones, because we do require this too for the septic, they're yearly.
Okay, that's what I was just getting at.
Yeah, the septic, they're yearly, so they show their, their certificate yearly or their approval.
That was the only question, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you keep that on file then?
Yes.
Okay.
Further questions?
I do, on the licensing, there, there's a lot of stuff going on here. You've got continuing education. Okay, so you've got a contractor that's a roofer. Are you going to have continuing education for roofing? Or, I mean, what, what is the continuing education?
Right, and this is something that is required by the city too. So all of these contractors that are licensed through the city have to do the same. And our septic installers have to go through and get continuing education. There's a number of webinars and things like that online that allow them to do that. And so that's not anything that's outside of.
So they can just say, we, we saw it on blah, blah, blah or whatever.
Right, and they give us a certificate, yes, we have been.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
The continuing education thing. It doesn't make much sense to me. I mean, they, it has no specifics. It doesn't say you must do it for a particular period of time, cover a certain course of, you know, curriculum. I, 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 I found it very confusing and I thought it was maybe an oversight somehow. But am I, am I missing something here? Continuing education. What's the standard, you know, I mean?
Right, it's under the general building contractor licenses. I do know with the city, there's, they accept a number of them. I know our septic ones.
What do they say? We'd like one example of continuing education in the last year or two examples or twenty-two or what?
It's just six hours.
Yeah, I was just, I just read six hours.
Yeah, it's just six hours.
Right.
And that's it? That's.
Our license period.
Okay.
Further questions?
Did you want, just like a general question, can I put one on the table? If you run into, let's say, wind contractors, we have the, the one in New Underwood that's going to be a solar, those sort of specialties, I could see that being a bigger problem to approach this. In other words, those contractors have got to fall under this somehow. How are you going to look at those guys?
They would have to fall under the general because we don't have specific requirements for the solar. I would hold.
Then their superintendent would have to be qualified under this because they're coming from.
They'd have a general contractor's license.
That's all I was asking, thank you.
On fourteen, number two, engaged in fraudulent deceptive dishonest, who determines this?
Where, what?
Page ten of eleven at the top.
Suspension of a license.
Oh. Number, I'm not seeing it, I'm sorry, which number?
Page ten of eleven.
I'm on ten of eleven.
Clear at the top. Uh, number two, engaged in fraudulent deceptive dishonest. I'm just curious, because there's things that happen that are not right and yet who determines how serious this is? Do we have a standard that we use or how does that work?
Um, we don't at this time, no, because this isn't in place. So we haven't come across that. We have had people say things at our counter that are not true.
Well, I'm sure.
This one, number two.
The planning director.
Yeah.
Obviously, they have the ability to appeal, so.
Appeal that my decision, so if they feel like that my decision was inappropriate based on that condition, they can appeal to the board of adjustment.
And then they can appeal the board of adjustment if they disagree with them still and then they can get in front of a court. So, I mean, there are safety procedures in place, so it's not like a planning director can just decide that they don't like a particular person and decide that they're a liar. There has to be actual verifiable kind of facts that we can go forward with. And I would assume that any sort of decision like that would heavily involve the state's attorney's office.
It will.
Further questions? Okay. So we've talked about several items. Do you guys just want to take them one at a time and go through them or thoughts on, on the approach?
Will, Mr. Chair, will we see this again next meeting?
No, if you would like to see it again with the changes, then I would recommend that you continue it till the next meeting. With the proposed changes, we can make those changes and then you can.
So moved.
Motion and second to continue to the next meeting to allow staff time to incorporate the proposed changes in ordinance amendment twenty-one dash twenty-one and that meeting will be, which one, Jerry?
Uh, the twenty-seventh of October, I believe.
Twenty-seventh of October. Next meeting, correct?
Yes.
All right. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no.
It's, I apologize, it's the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Over twenty.
Note for the record that it's the twenty-fifth, not the twenty-seventh.
Oh, excuse me.
All those opposed, no, I think I forgot to say. There are no noes, motion carries, we are on item fifteen.
Item fifteen is the county board report. The board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from their September twenty-seventh meeting. With the exception of rezone, RZ twenty-one dash twenty-six for Pink Cabin LLC, KTM Design Agency Agent. Rezone six point six eight acres from Suburban Residential District, Suburban Residential. This rezone was approved by the board of commissioners.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Brittany, is that the one that was in Box Elder?
No, that was the Murphy Ranch.
Oh, the Murphy, all right, not, yeah, I, I'm sorry, in the valley.
Rapid Valley, yes.
I don't know why I said Box Elder. I was just thinking east.
Anything else?
Any questions about that one? Because I know people are looking at me, so. If you didn't watch the meeting, you, you might have a, an idea why we changed. The, the proposal we had at that meeting was different than what was brought here, is that correct?
Um, they had addressed a lot of the concerns that this planning commission had. So the applicant came with a bunch of information showing, you know, the number of lots that they could fit on it, some design plans. I believe that they're going to try to put together something.
With the community.
Mm-hmm.
About the road? About the road?
Yes, and they are actually in their other phases. They are connecting the road to forty-four, so it'll go through, so they'll have a different way to get in to that lot.
When you, to answer your question, I was the one looking at it. When you have a project like that, that's an obvious one for the, the PUD and we're taking a little segment of it with a plan to move the same as the PUD, I think that's why this board overwhelmingly voted against it, you know, two to one. When you have that, I mean, that's that obvious. The road was a question, the fact that it was going to be the first time that we exercised a new option in our comprehensive plan and our zoning. It's tough for the commissioners then who end up, get elected to then get another, or they get a different look at it than we did. Just a thought. We, I mean, you guys got the option to push it back down to us and look at it again and take the recommendation instead, you passed it. So that was why I looked at you.
No, no, you're, you're fine. Uh, you know, my thought process on it was to continue it because the developer came up and spoke and he said, you know, we've, we've heard what the, the concerns were and we're willing to continue it to, um, so that we can have time to go and engage with the community to address some of the issues. They already talked about what their plan was to. I was contacted, the only thing I was talked, contacted about from any constituents in my district about concerning this was that brown section at the top, they didn't want multi-family units going in there. And so when they came and talked about, they said, you know, we, we, we heard that and so we're going to come back and maybe do single-family homes, you know. And so they were already talking to us, understanding what the concerns were so that they could still try to get rezoned. He said, we, we can continue it. I was willing to continue it. Uh, I don't remember who actually motioned to move forward with it, but it was still, it was motioned to move forward with the understanding that the developer is going to reach out and walk through all the concerns that, that the community has. Rezoning it doesn't mean they get to move forward to build. Uh, there's still more processes to that. And the, and the commission in general felt that it was acceptable to approve the rezone knowing that the developer was going to engage and since he's already made plans or since they've already made plans to address the road issue and the multi-unit issue, multi-dwelling living unit issue and things of that nature. So we're giving them opportunity to see if they do what they say they're going to do and then we'll revisit it whenever it comes back through the process and see where we're at.
Thank you, Chris. But I, that falls right into what I was saying. If you end up making them file the PUD, you get those in conditions and you see right up front that they're committed to them. You don't go back and talk to people and we hear that again and again on this commission that. and we hear that again and again on this commission, that people change the rules after they got their property or this sort of thing and, and you avoid that sort of thing. Where instead we were looking at six point eight seven acres of what really was the same property owner's property that they were going to develop and they told you they weren't going to develop that one, the brown area, but they were, they're really no more committed to it than they were before, the way I see it. Even though it's still not a bad idea, but at least the road, the development of the road, if you had that in there, I think that was a big issue, thank you.
And I think I just want to clarify, so the, the reason why we're not doing PUDs anymore is because they have caused so many issues in the county. We have multiple areas that are owned by multiple people and when you have a PUD that's owned by more than one person, it inherently causes problems, which is why we don't do them anymore.
But the wording in our, our ordinance now states that they've got to be under one flag.
But that's only for an overlay, it's only for an overlay, so we have grandfathers like Mountain Meadows that I can't even tell you how many problems there are with that PUD where it's owned by multiple people and so that's why we're just not doing them anymore as an actual zoning district, they're only overlays.
They had one advantage and that was that people are on, written on, that they had a commitment and this was what they were supposed to do and then people that buy properties surrounding those have some idea what other property owners are going to do, as long as it's one flag.
But the problem is, the problem is that when you have multiple people that own that, you have to get a consensus to change it.
You mean the existing ones?
Yes. And any, any of the grandfathered ones, which is why we're not doing them anymore, because they just cause so many problems.
This one hadn't been set up yet, that's what I was saying, they were just moving a baby step at a time, which is fine, that's financial stuff. But it doesn't give really solid commitments to this commission, it doesn't give solid commitments to the board of commissioners, thank you.
Items from the public, noting none, items from staff?
Uh, we just have the building permit report, um, again, we're ahead, um, in September, especially single family residences. For the year, we are, you know, almost double the number of permits and significantly above the, the taxable value for the year. So we're not seeing things slowing down at all, um, we're seeing more platted lots, especially in the three miles, so those building permits will continue to increase.
Questions on the building permit report? Anything else from staff?
Nope.
Item eighteen, items from the membership? Welcome, Michael, to the board. I may not be at the next meeting, I will let you know. Um, so I'm a maybe at this point, anything else? Noting none, Sandy, do you want to make a motion for adjournment?
Please don't move.
Second.
Motion is second for adjournment. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no, we're adjourned.